Okay, well, welcome to Troy Planning Commission meeting for February 27. Please call the roll.
Mr. Cappers?
Here.
Mr. McGary?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Mrs. Mahan?
Here.
Mrs. Snee? Mr. Titterington?
Here.
Mr. Wolke?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, we have our minutes from our February 13 meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes?
Well, toward the end of the minutes, as said, Mr. Wolke suggested the title of Chapter 15 should be Related Studies and not Implementation. I don't remember doing that.
Okay, where are you at now?
It's the third paragraph from the end. I did? Okay, Patrick said I did it, so.
Yeah, we made the change.
Okay.
So we're all set.
I'm old.
The whole meeting now.
Do we still want to take any action on the submitted minutes?
I'll move to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve. First matter on the agenda then is the historic district application for 322 West Main Street. Staff have a report?
Yes, sir, we do. The applicant is the Hospice of Miami Valley. They are requesting Planning Commission review in order to install some signage on the building located at 322 West Main Street. Property located at the southeast corner of Oxford Street and West Main Street, one block west, Suzy Courthouse. Zoning is B2, General Business District, HOH Top Form, listed building is anonymous street, two-story, brick building. It branches the gap between the Commercial District and Residential District, originally built as a residence, wagon shop, and was added to the rear, and was a funeral home in 1975. Building is described as a various point house, has connected with another house by modern addition, serving as the main entrance. Proposal, applicant is requesting to install signage which matches the existing and previously permitted wall signage. Previous tenant in this location had very similar signage in design, and square footage, and colors as well. Essentially, the new tenant, which is Hospice of Miami Valley, is looking to install the similar signage as well. The building, face of the proposed signage is 24 square feet at the rear entrance, I'm sorry, 24 square feet along Oxford Street, 3.8 square feet along West Main Street, and 6 square feet at the rear of the building. Property is allowed maximum of 100 square feet, and the existing and proposed signage would come under that maximum allowance. Proposed colors of the signs are the same as the existing signage, and as followed is SW 6146 umber, SW 6141 sulfur tan, net gold one-shot enamel, SW 6994 black ninth, SW 6145 patch brown, and SW 6143 basket beige. Application has been reviewed for compliance, which does mean the recommend the own ordinance, and staff does recommend the approval of the application.
Commission, have any questions of staff?
I certainly don't have any concern about the sign and the recommendation. Just wanted to mention that it's my understanding that Hospice of Miami Valley is different than the hospice that we have located in Troy today, so they'd be two different organizations, under the same hospice name, umbrella, but two different groups. Does that make sense?
Makes sense that the names and the entities are different. Makes sense as to why there's two in the same town.
That's what I don't know. But I would say, you know, meeting and sign requirements, I have no trouble with.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
There's a motion, a second to approve the sign request. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Next, we have a consideration of preliminary plan for the villages of Concord.
The staff have a report?
Yes, we do, thank you. Roger Hawk, who is in the audience here, on behalf of RL Hawk LLC, has applied for a request for a preliminary plan for the villages of Concord. This is actually located south of Wayne Street and north of the Kroger marketplace that recently went in, just to make you familiar where that is. Currently, it was developed originally in 2000 as a condo association group of condos that were supposed to develop out along the two roads that are primarily there. Now, the request is to finish the development with single-family homes, and the preliminary plan has been attached to the report, so you can look at the layout. It's the roads, there's no change in the roads, essentially the way it is laid out. So area is still approximately 16 acres, there's, I think, roughly 20 condos that are there now. There's common area with a lake, a clubhouse, that was kind of in the, well, I guess I'll call it the old section, the developed section, and then there's remaining 10 acres, just over 10 acres, that they're proposing to build 35 homes as single-family residences. The roadways, they're already existing, it's Lantern Lane and Paul Revere Way. They will have sidewalks along them, and they will be installed. The roads will have an access easement on them, which will allow access throughout the private roads, and then the roads will remain private, they will not be taken over by the city of Troy. They will not become public roads, they'll stay private. There was an issue we had run into with the roadway, the connection to the Wayne Street area is actually private property, and so we had an issue with our fire departments. They stated since now it only had one access, which you can kind of see goes on to, I believe that is Laurel Tree Court. To remedy the situation, they said they would have to be residentially sprinkled. Roger has agreed to sprinkle those unless they can get access easements from the neighbors, which then would help the fire department, it would ease their concerns and bring it into compliance, so they've made a note on the plat to make that adjustment. And then, all the lots are, they meet zoning code requirements. The largest lot is 6,000, or the smallest lot is 6,000 square feet, which does meet the minimum, the largest lot is 24,000 square feet, or just over half acre. And then the open space, they are not providing open space. The clubhouse actually stays with the current development, the new developments, the new single-family homes wouldn't have access to that, so they did go to the park board on February 5 and got approval to pay fees in lieu of, which would bring $17,500 into the park and recreational capital budget. Like I say, that was approved. The subdivision does meet the preliminary plan, does meet the zoning code and subdivision regulations. However, we had, when reviewing the declarations creating and establishing a plan for the condo ownership, there was some language in there that made us uneasy, and I wanted to have a discussion with if we could about that, because the real issue that comes down today is the access easement and the authority to provide that access easement. So without that access easement, the question we have is, does Roger have that authority to do that? And so I, was there a question?
Yeah, you keep mentioning the access easement. You're talking about the entrance at Armond.
It would be, the access easement would be on both roads that would connect Lantern Lane and Paul Revere Way.
Got it.
Yeah, so that way, all roads within the development, old development, new development, they would be able to be traversed through everybody in the development. And so that's where we kind of got stuck there, and so we made the recommendation we did, but I was hoping maybe through a discussion, some of that may be resolved. If not, then we can move on to a recommendation, but I wanted to open it up for questions you guys may have had, anything in the report.
Well, I'll start the discussion. I will state of record that this declaration was filed by myself back in 2000. In 2000, I represented RL Hawk. I have not represented him since the final amendment to that declaration. In fact, I know for a fact that he's been represented by other counsel in other matters, and I think he's represented by legal counsel today. When this was brought to my attention, I discussed this matter with Tim Davis concerning the contents of the public record, the public record being the declaration itself and the plat that was proposed. I pointed out to Mr. Davis a couple of the things that are shown on the preliminary plat which you see, and that is the vacated street, which was part of Oakmont Drive at one time, and that street gets vacated, the ownership of that street then goes one-half to each side of former Oakmont Drive. So that's not controlled by RL Hawk or Roger Hawk, it's controlled now by those independent owners. There's been some talk bandied around about an access easement. I indicated to Mr. Davis at the time of our consultation, I have a problem with the reference to an access easement. I don't think, from what I understand of the public record, that Mr. Hawk has the authority to grant an access easement over the private streets known as Lantern Lane and Paul Revere Way. Those are common areas, now known as common elements of the condominium association. I don't think he's a member of the association. I don't know that he's a unit owner in the association. That may be wrong, but a review of the public record also indicates that he owns no units out there. The use of the common areas are pursuant to the declarations only for the use and benefit of the unit owners themselves, not for the developer, not for the public, not for access by anyone who does not already enjoy an easement across those common areas. Consequently, I didn't think Roger had the authority to go ahead and grant any access easement on those private drives. I'm not sure that the condominium association even knows about it. However, I believe that there's only nine or 10 unit owners out there, and they're prob, I don't know if they are, have even met as an association. Roger, as a developer, had the right to control the homeowners' association for a period of time, for a maximum not to exceed five years from the establishment of the association, which would have terminated his developer's control in 2005 to 2007, and I don't see how the authority, how he can get that authority without the homeowners' association approval. And then the homeowners' association may even have to amend the declarations to go ahead and permit that access easement. So there's a number of hoops to jump through, and I don't think they're ready to go ahead and have approval of preliminary plan without doing something with the homeowners' association and the owners out there. In addition to that, I received today a letter from one of the owners that's attached to your packet that was dated February 12, and I just received a copy of today, it was forwarded to me as chairman of planning commission here at this site, not my office site, that indicated that her unease about any rumors that are going around about the development of the property. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Titterington?
Have you shared your concerns with Mr. Kerber, who I understand couldn't be here, our law director, and, I mean, where's he at with it? What was?
I have shared my concerns with him. I didn't get his final take on what his position would be.
So recognizing that Planning Commission is really advised by this city law director, unfortunately, he couldn't be here, I mean, these, it was way over my head, so I need somebody's advice on this.
And I'm letting you know that I am an attorney, I prepared these documents, I am not rendering legal advice here. I'm just reviewing what is a public record.
Got it. Never seen it so bad.
So am I understanding correctly, what you're saying is this proposed subdivision is in effect landlocked? It appears to need to be that way. If you take a look at the preliminary plan, this is a vacated street, these are private roads, the public thoroughfare stops right here, the smart, okay? So conceivably, the preliminary plan could take care of these lots, because they have access to a public thoroughfare. But these lots in between, which he's plotted out, don't have access to a public thoroughfare, they're through private roads, of which they don't have any control, at least not as shown on the policy.
And so how would they remedy that and get control, assuming that your opinion as an attorney is?
I'm not rendering an opinion as an attorney.
Well, they, okay, your individual concerns, how would they remedy that?
Well, they're gonna have to contact, it would bleed to me, that the homeowners' association, each one of those homeowners, according to the declaration, has an undivided interest in each one of those common areas. So if you have 10 homeowners, they have an undivided interest in that common area, they have a right to go ahead and undertake as an association the powers and authorities under the declaration. They have the right to amend the declaration, which might be to go ahead and take the common areas and make them for public access. They have the right to amend the declaration to go ahead and sell the common areas. They have the right to terminate the condominium regime, and if they were to terminate the condominium regime, then they would go to private lots then, instead of public, excuse me, condominium lots, and then the private streets would be public streets, and they'd all be subject to a preliminary plan that would incorporate the signatures of all 10 of the unit owners. That might be an alternative.
But that presumes that the city would want to accept that as public.
It makes that presumption, it does, and it makes the presumption the homeowners' association would cooperate in that regard. I will note also that according to the declarations that were filed, this was what is called an expandable condominium. The expandable condominium indicates that the developer has seven years to expand the condominium by adding additional property to the condominium regime. So within the first seven years, if the developer wanted to add any of these lots to the condominium regime and sell them off as condos, he would have been well within his right to do that without any communications with the homeowners' association at all. In addition to that, you can expand that for another seven years, so they have a total of 14 years beginning into the year 2000 to do that.
So in any case, that deadline is expired.
That time period is passed. Is it understood that it's staff's recommendation that this be tabled?
I would think without clarification from our law director, that would probably be the choice of action, as stuff is legally probably above my expertise.
At this juncture with preliminary plan, there would not be any public hearing, would there?
That is correct.
I like your suggestion, though, that only unit owners receive a notice concerning this, I think that would probably be wise, just start getting their input into the process.
So when is our next planning commission meeting?
It would be March 13, I believe. Yeah, March 13.
So two weeks from today. Mr. McGary, is Mr. Kerber available on the 13th?
I did not specifically ask him if he was available on the 13th.
It appears as though the petitioner or his representative would like to speak to us.
I would.
Mr. Tinn, come forward if you would please, name and address.
Appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Jeremy Tome, I'm a local attorney with Waitome in Everly, here in Troy, at 124 West Main. I represent Mr. Hawk in his individual capacity and the capacity of applicant for the matter that's before you today. I've had numerous meetings with Mr. Davis and Mr. Kerber regarding this matter. We've exchanged definitive emails that have outlined the things that, from Grant Kerber's point of view, are things that needed to be addressed. We have addressed every single one of those in the preliminary plan that he has asked us to, to his satisfaction. I think our last meeting was two weeks ago.
That's correct.
And everything that he had in his email, we addressed all of those issues on the preliminary plan. Correct?
I believe the emails we asked for pertaining to subdivision regulations and zoning code were met, yes.
And in relation to the HOA authority, we provided a document that said that my client had the authority to enter into that. That was provided with Mr. Kerber. He did not note any objections or concerns related to that. He had a chance to review the CCRs, the codes, covenants, and restrictions. He didn't have any issue with that or the HOA declarations. So I think we have a complete submittal that is before you currently. In relation to the issues, this plat is not a plat, Mr. Wolke, to answer your question, it's not a plat that's landlocked, there is road access that goes all the way through there that accesses every lot that's built on, that's not built on, that's currently there. We're attempting to get a second access, and the purpose of that access is just to reduce the cost of constructing new residences so we don't have to sprinkle them. But Mr. Kerber has expressed no concerns from the easements that we have filed, that there's complete access throughout the development for any of the landowners or their invitees to come to the properties. We addressed that with him. I would say we probably had a total four meetings before we came in here today. In addition, Mr. Cappers noted some concerns in relation to if the HOA is currently in effect, and if Mr. Hawk can have basically control of the HOA at this time. I know he's saying he's reviewing public records, sounded a little bit like a legal analysis of it to me, but from my perspective and from my understanding of the Ohio Revised Code, there's no new HOA that has taken effect, there's no new registrants that have filed for an HOA, so my client is in the undisputed position of being able to be an authority for that, despite any public record, personal opinion that anybody might have to the contrary. Also, in relation to Mr. Cappers' questions, what is also available in public record is the fact that my client actually owns six built units in addition to the 35 unbuilt lots in that plat. So he actually is a property owner there, and he probably, between him and his brother, probably even the majority of the property owners that are in that plat, so even if there was an HOA vote, I find it very doubtful that anybody else would be in control of that other than Mr. Hawk. So I think these issues that are being brought up are kind of red herrings, frankly, in comparison to what needs to happen. I think most people would agree, and I think the residents of the city would agree, and I'd find it odd if the HOA members and landowners would find it to the contrary, that it's a better thing to move to lower density than it is to go from lower density to higher density. All my clients trying to do is actually reduce the number of units that are gonna go in there, which I think will have a positive impact on the neighboring units' values, and he has met all of the requirements that have been put out by the city staff, every single one of them. And I don't have a single email from Mr. Kerber, and I can represent that under oath or to you personally, that says that he has any reservations regarding any of the documentations that have been provided to him to date. So I know he's not here, I'm not trying to speak for him, I just want to note that there is no communications between us where he has any concerns listed.
Mr. Tinn, which units is Mr. Hawk on?
Well, I have a couple of them here that are printed out, would you like to see them?
Yes.
Here you go.
This is vacant land.
No, there's a couple of new houses on, or condos, I should say. I've got a map, too. They said their Troy Investment Group is the LLC, the owner's.
This is vacant land.
No, there are maybe one or two that are vacant, but there are several that have the houses on them, and I highlighted, like, here's one where the property, real estate taxes are over 1,800 years, so there's no way that that's a vacant lot.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Has any consideration been made to amending the declarations to provide for permission by the association to do this?
I have not been made aware of anybody who's a member of the HOA that has requested that, anybody that's a landowner that's there. And I'm not aware of my client even being made aware of that, of anybody having any concerns about that to date.
And has the, Mr. Hawk turned the association over, the common areas over to the association?
I don't know that he has. I don't know that it's relevant for the approval of the preliminary plan.
Well, it's relevant to the extent that he was supposed to do that within five years after the association was created.
Yeah, and that's a right that the HOA members, if they wanted to assert, are free to assert. I mean, I don't feel that that's an appropriate thing for planning to consider, no offense to anybody here, but I mean, I think that what's before you today is a preliminary plat for approval.
Well, we need to target the person with authority to go ahead and make the decisions, and if he wasn't, if he's not authorized at all in behalf of the association, as he's failed to turn it over to the members, then I still have a problem with that.
Well, I don't know that, I've addressed this issue with Mr. Kerber, and I've received nothing with him. I gave him the documentation, he has not questioned it, he's accepted it, so, I mean, he is the legal counsel for the city, so I don't know what else I can do to appease him.
Yeah, I think Mr. Davis's comment, though, was that he, in his response to you, is he took a look at the subdivision regulations and the zoning, and gave you information concerning what the city would require on those issues, not on the condo.
That's correct, yeah. We have submitted a resolution, an HOA resolution, that grants my client the appropriate authority.
After an association meeting? Out of what did that resolution come from?
It's a document that was created, it's a resolution from the HOA, which is controlled by my client.
Yeah, that's the problem I have, is the control layer.
Well, that's something that's between Mr. Kerber and I think to discuss, if he thinks there's a legal defect in it, and he has not brought that to my attention.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Tinn? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate the time.
Any other questions of staff on this matter? Staff want to take any action? The staff doesn't. Excuse me, commission.
Well, it seems prudent, until we hear from the law director, that we not act on this, so the appropriate motion, in my opinion, would be to table.
Is that a motion?
That's my motion.
There's a motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Okay, motion is passed, the item is tabled.
The staff have any else coming forward, commission?
We do. There are two pieces of information in front of you. The first one is from the yard company. This is in response to the planning commission's concerns regarding historic reviews, materials, facades, colors. What we had done, we had reached out to Joe Nickel, who was a part of MKSK, who did the riverfront study. He was already familiar with Troy, in the downtown especially. He is now with the yard company. We reached out to him to see if he would give us, what plan he would come in to do to provide recommendations on, in helping us get to levels for comfort with colors, materials, facades, things of that nature. So what's in front of you is just his proposal, we just, we don't expect any action today, we just wanted to pass it out so you could review it and discuss it at the next meeting, if this is something you want us to pursue forward at that time. So it'll be on the agenda on the 13th. Second sheet of information is the Planning and Zoning Board Essentials. This is through Miami Valley Communications Council. This would be the second time they've held this event. The first event was held two years ago and was sold out rather quickly, and it's gotten great reviews from various communities around us. As we are a part of MVCC, this is just really geared towards planning commission and BZAs. It's just an extra training. If this is something that you feel you'd be interested in, we can certainly sign you up, certainly let us know, but you have the information if you want to read through it. Once again, I think the, it's three Thursdays, March 21, 28, and April 4, and registration just has to be registered by March 11. So if it's something that interests you, let us know, and we can get you registered for this event.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Nothing further, thank you.
Your recommendation on this preliminary plan did talk about the notice to the unit owners. Are you gonna continue, are you gonna do that?
If that's something the planning commission would like, we can certainly send a letter to them notifying them of what happened at this meeting, and then invite them and make them informed that this would come again at the March 13 meeting.
I would suggest that you do that.
Will do.
Any other matters to come before the commission? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.